Very much for attending to this evening. I know busy, everybody is. But it sure is putting now this whole process is very important to America at large. And the way that you can have a bus to impact bigger votes is out of the lung. So all of these candidates, I know really appreciate you coming tonight. Getting to know them better, seeing them in person. And finding out what they believe that they have to offer. As potential council members for the city or town of Nashville. So thank you again. Um, now, the format tonight is that each candidate will have a two minute for opening statements. One minute for responses to questions. And one minute for closing statements. We will rotate, taking turns who goes first as all candidates respond to each question. Candidates, if you have a cell phone timer, please feel free to use it to help you keep track of your response time. I do want to introduce Pam Raider, Secretary for the Power of Brown County League. She will be serving as timer. And she will help you keep track of time. When you have ten seconds remaining, Pam will hold up a yellow card. When the time is up, Pam will hold up a red card. She will have a red card. Um, these finished sentences and wrap up. Um, I'm sure that we want to try and keep on track to get to as many of the questions that the, uh, the league has formulated a few introductory questions. And then we have already several submitted from the audience. And I know they are anxious to hear your responses. Uh, during the introductions and questions, please hold up all applause until the form is concluded. Let's start with a round of applause for our twenty twenty-three Town Council candidate. We will begin the opening statements by the candidates for National Town Council. In the order in which they are seated. And there was no preference given to where each candidate is seated. We drew numbers so that it would be totally random where the candidates would be seated. So there's no significance being in the middle or being on the end. Um, yes, they're all equal in your mind, so should be. Um, the order of speaking will go to each during the evening. Candidates will have a two-minute speech for opening remarks. And Rex, we'll start with you.
Hello, I'm Rex Waters. I live on Art Strive. I grew up on Art Strive. Um, I'm Rex number three.
Very loud.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
It is on.
It is on, okay, she warned me. I just speak up. Okay, so, you know, so my name is Rex Waters. I live on Art Strive. I grew up on Art Strive. Uh, my, yeah, so my, uh, my dad's probably more famous than I am. And my son's probably more famous than I am. But, uh, I get to learn a bit from both of them. Um, I, uh, I work FedEx. And, uh, so when I'm going, I'm going through stretches. But then when I'm home, I'm going through nice stretches of time as well. And I've had the blessing of, you know, having grown up here to see how Nashville, how Brown County has progressed over the decades. And, uh, that's my goal is to just help this town as it continues. Cause if you ever see Jack Harden on Facebook, he posts up old pictures of the town. Changes the constant. You know, it's things are always going to change, but let's not change Nashville into something that we love.
Rex?
Hi, I'm Ross Benson. Uh, I live up in Pine Tree Hills, uh, just on the north side of town. Uh, my wife and I moved here from Chicago about six years ago. And I never meant to be sitting here right now, you know? When we came down here, uh, we were immediately assisted by people who work in town. Um, we made fast friends with a lot of people down here. Uh, we got a community up in Pine Tree Hills that we, uh, love calling home. Uh, we just got settled in here and within a year decided to open our own little shop downtown. So I'm a homeowner and a store owner in town. Um, I've been in the Air Force. I've been self-employed for numerous, many years. I work with a lot of industrial accounts and, uh, work to supply equipment for various requirements. So one thing I've found, uh, that I, I think I do well is to sit and listen. And try to, you know, draw consensus around ideas and trying to figure out ways to move forward. Uh, with, with whatever, you know, problems in front of us. Uh, I love Nashville. It's a incredible community. Very unique for a small town when you have a small town that adds such an, uh, it's just, uh, there's obviously town people, the Rex has lived there all his life. And then people like you have been, and you get a nice blend. And it, it helps the town grow. Uh, when we were looking for a small town, we found a lot of towns were, you know, uh, dying. You know, Walmart moving out, the edge of town, everything in the town was, was just evaporating. This town is unique. Got a great little, um, uh, blend of, you know, residents and business. And it's, it's a great little, uh, uh, tourist town. It was a great place to all live and, uh, enjoy life. Thank you all for being here. Happy to be here.
Thank you, Ross. Nancy. Well, first I want to thank the lead women voters tonight for sponsoring this. And then I just found out that the Palm Bureau also sponsored it. So I'd like to thank them. We appreciate their participation in our election. Um, I, like Ross, uh, eleven years ago when I moved here, I had no idea that I would ever be sitting in this chair, uh, ever. And, um, I sat in this chair for quite a long time and, um, and, uh, it's, it's kind of surreal sometimes when I look back at, at my life here in Nashville. When I first moved here, I was a shop owner. Um, I became involved in the chamber. And pretty much just right away got involved and immersed in the community. Was on Arts Management Commission. And from there got elected to Town Council. During my time at Town Council was one of the most rewarding things I've ever done in my life. Um, I do have two children I'm very proud of. Uh, but outside of being a mother, uh, I have to say that it was probably one of the most rewarding things I've ever done. And being a natural leader, I hope that, um, that you can trust me to lead this great team that's already here. Um, we have a great team of employees. We have good council people that are going to be staying on board. And, um, I just would look forward to being a part of that team again. Thank you, Nancy. Bruce?
Okay. Uh, my name is Bruce School. I'm from, uh, Brown County in Nashville. Uh, nineteen eighty-four, ascended the position of Postmaster. And served as Postmaster here in Brown County in Nashville for twenty-eight years. Couple of my accomplishments were to build a new post office building across the street here. And to implement a nine-one-one addressing system. So that the nine-one-one system could work here in Brown County. Uh, US Army Veterans, uh, when I served in Vietnam and was trained in the military. I graduated from Indiana University with a bachelor's degree in business management. And from I U P Y with a master's certificate in public management. And from the military replacement of the US Army in Fort Jordan, Georgia. I served on the Nashville Town Council in the late eighties and early nineteen nineties. And I was on the council to build this building here that we're sitting in today. Part of being on the Town Council is that you're also on other commission boards also. I, so I also served on the area planning commission of Brown County and Brown County Board of Zoning Field. I spent three years on Brown County Economic Development Commission. Uh, I started the Nashville, was on the Nashville tree board, but I started in nineteen eighty-nine. I was chairman of that board for over thirty years. And so this is about three years ago. I'm also one of the Nashville Designer Review Commission. I'm still on that and have been on it for, for probably going on ten years now. I've been on the Brown County Convention Visitor Bureau for about twenty years, six of that as chairman of the board. I was a chairman of the board when we moved the visitor center down to where it is now. We've got a new building there. Uh, I'm also, uh, one of the founding board directors of the Brown County Music Center. So I'm, I'm, I'm that too. My wife and I have an operating firm, so. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, Lance?
Uh, I'm Lance Muller. I would also like to thank the lead women voters for this one. That's a lot of work. Um, so a little bit about me, uh, I was born and raised in Kokomo, Indiana. Um, both of my parents were dairy farmers. Uh, I just, I had to gather and milk cows twice a day for the rest of my life. So I went to IU, so we moved to this area and got an head degree. Um, later a master's from Indiana Wesleyan. I moved to Brown County in two thousand to serve as the art, uh, instructor at Brown County High School. Uh, it was a position I had for about nineteen years when I finally came over to work with my wife and family and our businesses. We own the Robinwood Inn, uh, the Birds' Nest Cafe and the Wood Fairy Coffee. Um, you could say I have all of my headaches in this past. So I care deeply about town. I'm deeply rooted here. Um, that's why my wife and I, my wife, Tyra's in the audience. She serves on the Town Council now. We decided to get involved in town because, like I said, we really do have our eggs here. Um, she's decided not to run again because she's taking care of her uh, mother who's still, so she has not gone running again. So I decided to step in and run. Um, uh, I currently serve on a designer review commission with Bruce and the tourist commission. Um, I really believe that the boards and the council are, um, about public service. And, uh, they're not partisan or they shouldn't be. Um, and it really should be about serving the community, not self-serving your, your own business or yourself. Um, I do want to commend the government here. They may have really easy for me to serve on these boards and to ultimately run. And I hope that everybody in that you vote for, it's on the votes for this election.
Thank you very much, please. Now we're going to move into the questioning portion. And, um, and we do appreciate that you all want to clap for these candidates. Um, but we're trying to make sure we get the maximum bang for our buck here and get as many questions in as possible. So try to bear with us as we do that. Um, Ross, we're going to start with you. What is your understanding of the water infrastructure needs with the Nashville Water System? And how would you propose to address them?
I understand that where it's, it's a, a collection of, uh, old pipes that were purchased, I believe, in that area at one point installed down here. Um, I also understand that a lot of our primary feed is coming downhill from one thirty-five. So we're building a lot of pressures, builds up, comes down into the area. Um, I know we've got a lot of, lot of loss in those lines, uh, approaching near forty, forty-five percent. It's very expensive for us to continue that way, uh, when, I mean, we have, you know, almost spend two dollars to fill one. Um, it's a problem that's not going to get any better. Um, I know that, uh, uh, there were proposals in the past to sell off the utility. I don't necessarily think that would be the best interest of Nashville. Uh, but I think it's a problem that definitely needs to be addressed, uh, in the next four and develop a longer approach to, uh, what, try to find some solutions for it.
Thank you, Russ. Nancy, would you like for me to read a good question? Sure. What is your understanding of the water infrastructure needs with the Nashville Water System? And how would you propose to address them?
So, um, first of all, I was, uh, part of the creation of the utility board that we now have, which is an amazing group of, um, people to oversee both utilities, both water and sewer. Uh, we had one of our board members back here. I'm now a board member of that. I attended all their meetings, um, even before I was a board member. Um, as far as water goes, yes, our infrastructure is very old. Um, it was old when we bought the pipes that go in the ground. There's lots of different pipes now that are in the ground. We are constantly chasing leaks. Um, we're learning all about our water system. We have great engineers now that are working on it. We are devising this time a water plan so that we can start upgrading all the pipes in the town. And, and we have a utility board that is overseeing all that. And even though, yeah, it's in bad shape and our pipes are seeping water, I still trust the utility board that they're going to do a good job at fixing things.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, Bruce, I was the same question to you. What is your understanding of the water infrastructure needs with the Nashville Water System? And how would you propose to address them?
Nashville, on the average, provides about eleven million gallons of water a month from Brown County Water. Eleven million gallons of water. Of that, they lose five million gallons of water a month. That's the same if you drive down a highway and see these big, like, tank farms. Those are million gallon tanks. Nashville loses five of them every month. So they need to start by finding those lakes and stuff. And I would start by getting, uh, affordable temporary meters. And say you have a line going into Parkview. One line goes into the Old Dock. You put a meter on where it goes in. Every month, you know exactly how many rates you've got, how many gallons of water they've used in Parkview. That should be the same as that temporary meter, or that's what you've lost there. So I start isolating losses. And I would start replacing lines from money saved in other areas and not go after a twenty million dollar grant to replace them all.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, Lance, same question. Would you like for me to read it?
Please.
What is your understanding of the water infrastructure needs with the Nashville Water System? And how would you propose to address them?
Um, anybody that does business or for that matter, lives in town knows it's a huge problem. It was out the other morning, as a matter of fact. Um, I, I don't pretend to be an expert on the water system. Uh, but I think we have some really good people in town working on it. Um, I, I think that the cost of the water is a major concern for residents and businesses. And I really don't think there's any easy solution. I think it's going to take time. I think it's going to take patience. Um, and I think, you know, it as far as relying on the people that have been studying this problem, working on this problem, as I don't remember, I would really lean on that for direction. I also think it's possible there's other avenues we haven't explored. And with this issue outside of box thinking, um, really nothing should be off the table.
Thank you, Lance. We're back to you, Rex. What is your understanding of the water infrastructure needs with the Nashville Water System? And how would you propose to address them?
Okay, um, I think a lot of good things have been said here. Uh, I agree with this. Do I still seem to speak up?
Very good.
Okay.
Try to, try to. We have other microphones.
So it's more. So it's not just. Okay, uh, no, a lot of good things have been said up here. Uh, and I agree with Lance, I'm not an expert on this, but I do read the paper. I try to keep up on these things. And it does seem like the engineers are coming up with some solutions about how it's really a pressure issue, is a big issue. Um, I also agree with the idea of no stone unturned, you know, whatever we can do to try to fix the problem. We should be open-minded to it. Um, but, uh, yeah, the leakage is, is got to be taken care of. And, um, I don't want to repeat what they're saying. Uh, but, yeah, the main thing is I would say whenever we can find that works, we need to, we need to work with that.
Thank you, Rex. Okay, now we move on to the next question and we will.
We're going to have to insert a comment, um, and rebuttal.
No?
Okay, sorry.
So you, you can possibly rebut in your final remarks if you wish to.
Thank you. Sorry, apology.
No problem. And you're actually going to be first to answer the next question. Um, and that question is, how would you address the needs of residents versus the needs of tourism and businesses in your plans for the future of Nashville?
I think the key word there is plan. So, um, I have always been an advocate of trying to create a comprehensive plan for this town. Um, I, if we don't have a plan for this town, then the question isn't even, you know, valid. Um, we've got to make residents our priority. They are the ones that are voting for us. Um, yes, businesses are a big part of that and they support this little community. But, um, bottom line is we need a plan. We need people to be active in their participation of creating that plan. Uh, we've got some plans already in place that we didn't put together. Um, but we need to have really participation from the residents in order to create a plan.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, Bruce, how would you address the needs of residents versus the needs of tourism and businesses in your plans for the future of Nashville?
Well, the tourists are just here for part of the year and part of the time. They have unique needs, like restroom, parking, the, the residents are here all the time. So we need to really address what, what affects them the most. And that would be like streets and sidewalks, public lighting, uh, storm drainage and water and sewer, things like that need to be addressed the most. And then those are working properly and then that affects the tourists too. I've noticed when tourists come, what they're looking for is improvement. They want to see things have gotten better. And I've had some people say, yeah, it's not like it used to be. Well, it should be better than it used to be. Yeah, so that's what we're looking for. And by making it better for the residents, it's going to be better for the tourists too. Especially like safe sidewalks and lighting, um, street lights, things of that nature and storm drainage. So that's what I do.
Thank you, Bruce. Lance, same question. How would you address the needs of residents versus the needs of tourism and businesses in your plans for the future of Nashville?
Um, you know, this, this is a, this is a tricky little ten to think about. Um, the people that live here and the people that come here, um, people that have businesses that live in the county. Um, it is, it, it's a tough, tough thing to have a small town have this influx of people into it. Uh, I really think the infrastructure needs are the main, it's the water, sidewalks, uh, parking, all those things. Housing for the residents is a big issue right now as well. Affordable housing. I think really if you do, you know, kind of to what Bruce said, make the improvements to the infrastructure, they will push business forward. They will bring opportunities for the residents. Um, but, you know, the residents should take, I believe that you got to listen to what they need. Um, and figure out what else we can hope for.
Thank you, Lance. Rex, how would you address the needs of the residents versus needs of tourism and businesses in your plans for the future of Nashville?
Well, uh, I would say that Nashville would not be Nashville without tourists. But it's the residents that we're working for, uh, would be working for, we work for up here on the Town Council. And that's, that's my priority would be the residents. But you've got to accept the fact that this town is what it is because of the tourists. And so when affordable housing is mentioned, that's a resident issue, not really a tourist issue. And that's, that's one of the things that I think is, is one of the things that we really need to address. And would make this town, uh, a more welcoming place for residents. Um, other than that, uh, like, I, I don't want to repeat what they said. Yeah, basically that the water, the infrastructure, it, it's a win-win because the tourists and the residents will both benefit if we have sidewalks that are properly repaired.
Thank you, Rex. Ross, how would you address the needs of the residents versus needs of tourism and businesses in your plans for the future of Nashville?
I would always place the residents' interests at, at, at the priority, uh, when thinking about, uh, making plays to the town. Um, the residents live here, this is their town. They want to walk around, which is then pretty set here, infrastructure, sidewalks. There's so many trip points around here that I'm surprised we haven't had any, you know, incidents where legal action could possibly be taken. Um, water is an issue. Uh, but, you know, owning a business here, I know that I pay, uh, my sales taxes. I pay my income taxes on my employees. But I pay, I pay very little as a business directly to the town. And I think that's probably true on a general scale. Businesses here pay, uh, employment taxes, they pay sales taxes. But they don't really pay, uh, directly to the town. That doesn't mean the town shouldn't be considered that. I think there are other agencies in town that would work, uh, in bringing in business interest to the board. And the, then the board should be responsible as well and not prejudiced. But first and foremost to the residents.
Thank you, Russ. Okay, now we are moving on to question number three. And Bruce, you will be the first one to, when you, um, be able to answer this question. Are there areas of service where the county and town can combine resources for the benefit of both?
Yeah, one of the major things I can look at, and I looked at when I was on the Town, Town Council before, was to combine the National Police Department with Sheriff's Department. And I can't begin to cover the topic in one night. But I would begin by saying that most people aren't aware that the Sheriff's Department has been providing police protection to the town of Nashville forever. They do it routinely. Back when the I G A got run into just a couple of weeks ago, there were no national policemen on duty at the time. That was investigated by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department, they, they control Nashville building all the time. And so I would, and they do all the dispatching from National Police Department. So I would combine the two departments. Just have one building, don't need a National Police Department building. And, uh, I would put them together and provide the same protection, same amount of protection for a whole lot of us.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, now we turn to you, Lance. Are there areas of service where the county and town can combine resources for the benefit of both?
I, I, to, to what Bruce said, I, I think the police and the sheriff department is, you know, they work together already. I have to know that I'm, we're getting rid of the police department. Uh, but I think they definitely, uh, work together. I would also like to see the town and county work together on some uh, development, kind of destination, tourism, and all of that, kind of in the vein of the Music Center. I would really love to see, um, some sort of, uh, arts hall for the artist community. Uh, there's been a lot of talk of convention centers. You know, the town doesn't have a lot of space property that really goes to the county. But it really would be beneficial to see something like, um, Henland from, uh, I think North Carolina or Tamrac in West Virginia that would give a place for artists to practice, education, conventions, things like that.
Thank you, Lance. Now we turn back to you, Rex. Are there, there is a service where the county and town can combine resources for the benefit of both?
I, I think that, uh, the town and the county should work together on tourist issues. I, when it comes to, we have, as we've already mentioned, the water is from the county. Um, the coordination between that, what I want to, uh, get rid of our Nashville water, no, I think it's beneficial for us to have some of our own infrastructure because it's more likely that our needs as a town will be addressed as long as we have our, on the head state. I would say that that's case with the, having a Nashville Town Department, a police department as well. Is that, yes, we obviously need to coordinate with the county. But I think there's a benefit to having some of our own individual accounts, uh, to, uh, to manage our troubles.
Thank you, Rex. Russ, you may now answer the same question. Are there areas of service where the county and town can combine resources for the benefit of both?
I think that a shortage of that is yes. Um, and every, the more, everybody sitting here is kind of touched on. There, there's a water utility where, you know, Nashville buying water from Brown County. So there's some redundancy there. There's obviously redundancy in response to incidents by either the sheriff's or police department. I know probably both of those questions have swirled around in this room for years and years and, and, and the changes have not been made. Um, for reasons probably that I don't quite understand at, at, being here just a few short years. Um, but perhaps, you know, taking a step sideways a little bit. Maybe proposing joint meetings between the town council and the county council. To sit in a room together and hash these ideas out together. I don't know if that's a try, but it'd be a way where you get. Different views from both the town and the county and just sit down and say, hey, where can we, where, where can we eliminate the doubts?
Thank you Ross. I'm Nancy. Are there areas of service where the county and town can combine resources for the benefit of both?
Gonna talk really fast. So we already do combine benefits with the county. Snow plowing, some of the roads are planned by county, some by town, depending on the type of road, we share that. That burden with the county. We also buy gas from the county now, so that helps the town. So we partner with them on the gas that the town, uh, employees use. Uh, we have a pedestrian planning partnership that is in the works now, and that's a town and county partnership. We have Arts Road forty-six, also a town and county partnership. H C I, Hometown Collaboration Initiative was both town and county. Um, as far as what Bruce said about the police, then they're done that. I worked very hard when I first came on council, thinking that it was a good idea to combine these. And what I found out is, no, it's not a good idea. The county does not have enough coverage to cover the town. We definitely need a town police department. Not saying that it couldn't be improved, but we definitely need a town. And we have tried to partner with the Brown County Water and it didn't, you know, go.
Thank you Nancy. Okay, now, now we turn to the next question. And the first individual that will be called upon is Lance. And the question is, is historic preservation in Nashville a priority? And please explain your answer.
Is it, is it a priority currently?
It is a priority for you as a candidate.
Is it a priority for you as a candidate?
Yes.
Uh, absolutely. Um, I mean, it's, it's the reason, it, it's one of the things we have. Um, that no one else has, is our legacy. Um, Brown County is legendary for the arts. The wild countryside. I mean, it really is something that we have that no one else does. Um, and preserving that is, is paramount. And not only preserving it, we, we should expand it. We should advertise it. We should, you know, there's, there's gonna be all kinds of businesses and people come through here. That that is gonna be forever.
Thank you Lance. Rex, is historic preservation in Nashville a priority? Please explain your answer.
Uh, historic preservation is absolutely a priority applied. It is what, it is one of our defining features. And this goes back to our last question, you know, what we can do with the county. And I think this is an excellent example of something the town can coordinate with the county. As far as preserving our history and promotively. I've, I've seen how we, I know it's not huge, but the historical markers. And simply the addition of a few extra historical markers, it matters. And I, I'm not one. But motorcycle guys, I've got friends from South Dakota that came here and they wanted to, that's what they do. All the historical markers, they wanna take pictures in front of it. You don't think, if you're not, that's not weird, you don't think of it. But that's why you gotta listen to people and find out what matters. And even those little things can go a long way to making this a better town and a better county.
Thank you Rex. Ross, is historic preservation in Nashville a priority? Please explain your answer.
I believe it is, yes. Um, I mean, I grew up in Massachusetts. In Massachusetts, you walk around, you see buildings. You know, built in, in the sixteen hundreds and the seventeen hundreds. If you come out here, you see it's eighteen hundreds. It's still history. It is important. It's what gives this area a unique character compared to with all areas of, of Indiana. There, and there are other. Forest areas in Indiana who are also competing against Nashville in terms of, of tourism. So, um, to, and, and then, you know, we, we travel in both places like Gatlinburg. Who have their own history and yet they sort of allow the, the businesses. And development to take over the town and it doesn't have really the recognizable charm that I think it probably had at one time. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's very important to Nashville. And then not only in, in, in structure, but in arts and music and so forth. Uh, you know, there was a recent attempt to try to limit music in this town, you know? That's part of our town. We've built lots, I built Monroe, uh, park right at the street and the highway that leads to it. So, yeah.
Thank you Ross. Nancy, is historic preservation in Nashville a priority? Please explain your answer.
Absolutely. We have a, um, development review commission that part of their, uh, guidelines have to deal with. You know, historical buildings and when people want to, um. Rehabilitation, they have lots of roads that they have to go to depending on what age their building is and things like that. We also have Peaceful Valley Heritage, um, that they are the ones responsible for the, my first that Rex, uh, talked about. The great group of people that are working very hard to make sure that our buildings and our history does not get, uh, forgotten. And I do think that they are a group that the council could work more closely with. I think it would be a great partnership to do more things together with the Peaceful Valley Heritage. But, I mean, I used to live in a Magnolia House. It's, but now it's a hundred and ten years old. So, yeah, I really appreciate the. The history that is here and not just the history of the buildings, but the history of people who lived in the buildings too.
Thank you Nancy. Bruce, is historic preservation in Nashville a priority? Please explain your answer.
Uh, yes, I've been a member of the designer review commission now for about ten years. We have guidelines that help us. Uh, protect and, and improve, uh, historic buildings and area buildings in our business district. And, and including historic buildings. So we, the D R C has guidelines for all of the. B one, B two areas, B three areas. Within that area is what we call the village district. Which has more strict guidelines than everywhere else. And then now recently, a year ago, we created a historic district. Which is very specific buildings within the historic or the, the, uh. Um, the village district. And so we protect them even more. We have a, a consultant on, on our board on the D R C from Indiana Landmark. That provides guidance for us too, for really, really important buildings. So, yeah, we're very active.
Thank you Bruce. Alright, um, now we move on to the next question. And the first person to be called upon the answer is you Rex. Nashville is a town that relies on people walking. Discuss acceptability issues and safety concerns if any.
Um, as was mentioned earlier, uh, it's kind of surprising that we don't see more issues about the trip hazards. And that is an issue that, uh, needs to be addressed to, uh, make this more accessible. Some areas, it comes down to historical aspect. Uh, you can't, uh, can't change everything. Because then you'll lose some of the characteristics. Everything is a five foot wide sidewalk perfectly paved and. You know, it leaves a little bit of what Nashville is. So it's, it's a tricky issue, but it's important.
Thank you Rex. Ross, Nashville is a town that relies on people walking. Discuss acceptability issues and safety concerns if any.
Uh, there are many accessible issues, acceptability issues and many safety issues. I've seen you personally driving up and down the Van Buren. People trip and fall. Um, the, 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 the area in front of the courthouse where you got three steps joining to two steps. And a big chunk of concrete sitting in the middle of them has been there since I came here in two thousand seventeen. Um, I don't know if that's a, a state issue because it's, uh, one, one thirty-five going through town or not. Um, and then, uh, you know, we had an issue in front of our, uh, building that we recently purchased. The, the, the town decided to put a new. Sidewalk in front of it. And then we, we had to respond to that and fill the space in between. Uh, but the, and we still have people who have issues getting up that sidewalk. Um, there's a lot of people in. That visit this town using walkers, strollers, whatever. They have a difficult wheelchair. They have a hard time getting around. And we, we do the better.
Thank you Lance. Nancy, Nashville is a town that relies on people walking. Discuss acceptability issues and safety concerns if any.
Okay, like I mentioned before, we do have right now in process, uh, the, a grant we're applying in the industry. When, uh, in place, one of the council members, we're not at the county. Um, I will say that when the last year of my term of council. We had developed a plan that would not have caused taxpayers very much money at all. And would have redone all of the sidewalks and all of the alleys in the town. Uh, after I was not elected, nobody followed through with that plan. They could have all been done by this time, right now. All of the sidewalks and all of the alleys could have been done had they gone through with that plan. So I would definitely pursue that plan again if I was reelected. Um, challenges would end up, we have a state road that goes right through our town. The county that Ross, or the county by the county building, that's county, that's not town. Town can't do anything about it. Um, if they could partner with county, that would be good. And remember that the sidewalks in front of the businesses belong to the businesses. Not to the town. Thank you Nancy. Bruce, Nashville is a town that relies on people walking. Discuss acceptability issues and safety concerns if any.
Yes, when I was on the town council before, I was running council, the town manager, we started a sidewalk program where we were just replacing. Side people every year in matter of practice. And that was discontinued shortly after I left. If I would start a program like that again, there are some sidewalks that are, are really a hazard. That have been around for a long time. Quarter mile sidewalk along Van Buren is a dirt sidewalk in town. It's all levels. And take a couple hundred thousand dollars for everybody. That has to be done. But I would focus more on places where there are no sidewalks. In the business district, like on West Gould Street, there's a whole city block there of businesses that have no sidewalks. They're forcing the customers, people, tourists out to walk in the streets as required. There's nowhere else to walk. And right across the street here, there's a house on the corner that have no sidewalks. The only place between town and, and the football field with no sidewalks at all. And I would require them to build sidewalks.
Thank you Bruce. Lance, Nashville is a town that relies on people walking. Discuss acceptability issues and safety concerns if any.
It, it all comes back to the infrastructure, it seems like. Um, I, I know this problem well. Watching people trip outside our business. Uh, I attach them religiously. It's terrifying. You know, it's gonna be a lawsuit or something. So, um, one thing I have seen in other cities is people come through. Couple times a year with a grinder and just cut those edges down, those trip hazards. It's a pretty cheap and efficient way to solve some of the problems of short-term, uh, long-term stuff. With historical buildings is a, a huge issue to change those. Now, I have seen it improve. In recent years as people do renovations, a lot of them are adding ramps. So I will say it's a problem that has improved. Um, it is difficult. The highway running through the middle of town is a difficult problem. Huge trucks and pedestrians don't mix very well. I don't know if there's a solution for that, but it, it is, uh, an issue for sure.
Thank you Lance. Uh, now we are going to be moving into the questions that have been submitted by the Van Bys. So, Ross, you will be the first one to answer this question. Affordable housing has been mentioned. Would you support encouraging large apartment buildings? Condos or tiny homes?
Um. Never been a big fan of tiny homes. I don't know what that would bring. I think tiny homes are gonna have. You know, two which require instead of even small apartments with, you know, and I think they would, they would also require more space. For example, than, you know, single family, one, two bedroom apartments. Um, I would be in favor of apartment construction, uh, and, you know, housing development like that. Um, again though, you're not taking any more land in Nashville. So, you know, I don't really know what would be, uh. And there, you know, uh, properties that are in Nashville that would support that. There may be more out in county than right here in Nashville. Um, and, and, but if they, if they were, and something like that came along, I'd be supportive of it as well as like the D R C, the other committees were. As well, and that it was not tasteful.
Thank you Ross. Nancy, affordable housing has been mentioned. Would you support encouraging large apartment buildings, condos or tiny homes?
I'm gonna go back to that keyword again. The keyword is plan. And if we want families that live in affordable housing. To be part of our town, then we need to plan for that. Uh, there are ways to expand the town. There are properties in the town that could become, um, housing. Uh, properties and, uh, affordable housing could be on there. Uh, but again, we have to have a plan. We have to know what we want five years from now. And if affordable housing is part of that, then we have to plan for it.
Thank you Nancy. Bruce, affordable housing has been mentioned. Would you support encouraging large apartment buildings, condos or tiny homes?
Well, probably the first thing to think about is where would you put these in Nashville. There aren't too many places where you can put any large developments. Or any developments at all. Uh, you'd have to work, maybe annex some sites and work with the county and with the Brown County Sheriff's Board. To expand service to those areas. But I think the most important thing is, if you're looking at any of that is. We would need to attract families and provide housing for families with children to attend our schools. And people who pay taxes in Brown County, who work here in Brown County and live here in Brown County. That's what we need is housing for them. And we're not trying to attract, uh, uh, anyone else. It's not, you know, we're looking primarily for families. And, uh, people with jobs or looking for jobs that can work. Support the community. Thank you.
Thank you Bruce. Lance, affordable housing has been mentioned. Would you support encouraging large apartment buildings, condos or tiny homes?
That, that is a tough one. I'm working the school for years and watching the population shrink. And people coming from out of town to go to school there or need, you know, to go to school. It, it, it really, housing is really an issue. Affordable housing. So it's tough to say, no, I don't want to do those things, um, when it's so necessary. Uh, the one thing that I think would be important is to put it to the residents. Um, what do you think? I'm sure some of them would not like a huge apartment building, um, town where you go for their house. Um, you know, I don't even know if that's possible. It's been mentioned already where you can put it. Um, the, the housing issue is a tough one. It's a really tough one. And I think that's one of the things that the county and the town. Could partner on to create some sites to develop for that.
Well, thank you Bruce, or Lance, I'm sorry. Uh, moving on to Rex. Affordable housing has been mentioned. Would you support encouraging large apartment buildings, condos or tiny homes?
I wouldn't be against either or any of them, but, uh, need to have an infrastructure in place. Uh, to, and not lose character of the town when you're doing so. And this is one of those times, I think, where. The town and county work together to find, uh, an advantage under this issue. And maybe something that doesn't quite fit in Nashville would fit somewhere else. As we've seen, they, it has housing developed. Whether or not that's possible, do you have additional housing, building area? I don't know right now, but that's the kind of thing that we might build along together so that there's more affordable housing. But it may not reside in Nashville itself. But, uh, we definitely need it. But infrastructure's gotta be there and, uh, you know, you know, sacrifice in the character of the town to do so.
Thank you Rex. Nancy, you're gonna start us off with the next question. Have you identified your top two areas to trim the town expenses?
I feel like I'm on game show. So. Top two areas to trim the town expenses of that. You know, when I, when I was on the council. We went over the budget, uh, mine by mine, make sure that we were spending correctly. We went over the budget, uh, line by line, make sure that we were spending correctly. On the utility board, we're going over the budget line, line by line, to make sure that we're spending efficiently and correctly. I think that's what you have to do, you have to budget that, you have to look at your needs and see if you can meet them. Um, and, you know, we talked about affordable housing. Our tax base is very small, so we don't have a lot of money, um, to spend on our infrastructure, to spend on our police department. To spend on our town hall employees, so we have to be tight with our budget. Um, I I don't think there's any true areas that I could say, I think you have to look at that overall budget and make sure that you're spending wisely.
Thank you, Nancy. Bruce, have you identified your top two areas to turn the town expenses?
Well, we've already talked about all the water loss and really, you didn't think about. If the town's behind eleven million gallons of water and you keep losing five million gallons, who's paying for that five million gallons? And that would be you every month. And so how to save money? Well, there's five million gallons worth of water, you can save right there. Uh, another one of my favorite topics is the police department. Right now, the police department has a building over here and they paid four hundred thousand dollars for. Their mortgage payment on that's twenty five thousand dollars a year. The police budget, the town's general fund is nine hundred and fifty five, sixty five thousand dollars a year of that. The police department gets almost six hundred thousand dollars. Their total for everything is about six hundred and thirty five, forty thousand dollars a year. So if we just get rid of that building over here and use that money for other projects like the infrastructure. To provide for new construction, things like that, that's what I'd be looking for.
Thank you, Bruce. Lance, have you identified the top two areas to turn the town expenses?
Uh, to to be really honest, I I have not identified my top two areas to turn the expenses. I I definitely think, um, even though it's going to initially cost money to fix. I think the water loss has been mentioned many, many times up here. Is it is it a huge issue, I think, getting on the front of that? Getting getting it in place, getting it shored up would go a long way. The cutting, uh, the residents' water bills, uh, they would be more dependable for businesses. Um, you know, the the police is such an interesting thing and kind of passionate, uh, topic of a lot of people. I don't know that we can fully get rid of that. Um, but I definitely think that any department that has a million dollar amount of cost should be looked at also.
Thank you, Lance. Rex, have you identified your top two areas to turn the town expenses?
Lance pretty much told me, I I feel like, like you said, I really don't feel like I know enough to say what my top two choices are. I, once again, I heard it and I do know about water, to know that that that's gotta be one of the top two choices. Uh, other than that, I honestly just don't know enough information to come up with my second choice of where the town can trim the budget. I just don't have, I don't have that nostalgia.
Thank you, Rex. Ross, have you identified your top two areas to trim the town expenses?
Yeah, if I'm elected to the town council, I I think my focus is here to be working as much as possible with water and. Um, in in there's a study that was done for town in, uh, twenty twenty two. Where they were talking about providing water to the state park. Uh, they identified that, um, they lost sixty four. If I read this right, a million gallons of water in the system. Uh, divided by a thousand and we're paying three fifty one per thousand gallons. It's two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars a year, it's just going into the ground. So there are ways we can immediately address that through, you know, pressure reduction systems. Again, our main water flow is right down the hill, uh, thirty five. By the time it hits town, we are seeing vastly increased water pressure, which is gonna increase the amount of, uh. Seems and things like that that are breaking underground. If we can reduce that pressure, that's a start. Next step would be replacing pipe while we're digging those holes, see if we're gonna address some issues along the same lines.
Thank you, Ross. All right, you all have finished that question, now we move on to the next, uh, area of questioning. And Bruce, you're up first to answer this question. What is your opinion of the equality commission and racism in Nashville?
Well, that commission was formed a little over a year ago. And I think the studies that I looked at before it was created, it really kind of indicated there was not an issue in Brown County. Not enough that a commission needed to be created and I don't know that a commission, that any members were actually appointed to the commission. And I don't know that they've actually done any work or even that since they've been created. So the start of that commission goes, I don't, I don't see where it has served a purpose to this point. I'm totally in favor of anything that would reduce or eliminate racism. I I don't know that there, I haven't really seen, uh, examples based based on real or racism taken practice. They're taking place here in what I've exposed to this stuff. So I don't, I don't think it's that much of an issue, but it does need to be addressed case by case. That I don't know if this commission has served its purpose, so there's an intent to serve.
Thank you, Bruce. Lance, what is your opinion of the equality commission and racism in Nashville?
Um, it it seems like the commission is, um, more and more symbolic than actionary. So, um, I haven't seen, uh, or heard of anybody who would saying it's been a problem. Or caused problems or, you know, it's it's tripped up in some way. I will say that, uh, racism is a problem, uh, I've been teaching it in school. I I saw it all the time, it's heartbreaking. So, um, you know, I haven't get into all that, but, um, it's, it does happen. It's it's something that we need to be postive and be committed to facts and rules and facts.
Thank you, Lance. Rex, what is your opinion of the equality commission and racism in Nashville?
I think the commission was founded in the, my great principle, but as has been stated, I don't know what the results of creating a commission is where. Uh, I'm not a teacher, but I do know that racism definitely exists in this town and town. That's just being, just discrimination in general for whatever the reasons, whether it's from monetary reasons or, you know, because you don't like. Other people, but, uh. So, I mean, it's the council in the right place for the commission itself. I don't know that there's really, I mean, in the past to show of war creation.
Thank you, Rex. Ross, what is your opinion of the equality commission and racism in Nashville?
Uh, I think the second part of that first racism in Nashville, uh, dialogue story here, you see a lot of people come in. I don't see it necessarily in the, in the business or the commercial, you know, the tourism side of things. But I, uh, when when that study first came out, we proposed to start beginning that. Uh, was was, uh, presented, I know that they had, um, referenced quotes by, um. The, uh, the visitors center as to, you know, issues that have been reported. And I have met, but I, you know, what are you saying, you know, is this is this legitimate, uh, issue that you're thinking? At the time, they said, yeah, we see a little bit of it, it tends to be the same people over over again versus, you know, widespread. Uh, so that's my first, uh, response on that. The second thing about a bureau of commission, we need trained people who can work in these areas rather than. Training citizens who may come in and make, uh, a situation that perhaps worse. So it is a valid issue, but it should be addressed by, I think, people with with effort training to walk into potentially hot situations and and try to sort of what happened.
Thank you, Ross. Nancy, what is your opinion of the equality commission and racism in Nashville?
Well, if you don't know, I'm the one that pushed for the given rights commission to be formed and passed on the town council. We had an ad hoc committee to study the issue. They overwhelmingly found that there was a need, uh, for a commission like this. And even if it is, as Lance said, just symbolic, just to make the statement. That we don't want to repeat the history that this that this town has. That we want to go forward and treat people equally. And that's important, no matter what their races, no matter what their sexes, no matter what their identity is. We as, as people of Nashville need to make a stand and say, we're not going to live like that anymore. And we're going to accept all people. So I think it is important, and as Lance said, it's documented in the schools, it's documented in the visitor's center, it's documented in many areas. The reason why we don't see it is because we're not the ones being discriminated against.
Thank you, Nancy. Um, Lance, I think it's your turn to, I'm not see, we first want to answer this question. Do you see any conflicts by serving on the town council and other committees and commissions? Such as C V V? That's correct.
I think, I think there is the potential for that. Um, I don't know that it should be a mandate that we could not. But I definitely see how, and I have to say, living in this community for twenty plus years. I have seen some definite conflicts of interest, as I'm sure a lot of you have. Um, with, you know, people's personal businesses, uh, their agendas. Uh, they push through the lens of the town council. So I definitely think the potential's there, whether it's a mandate that couldn't serve on these other places in place. But the C V Vs, C V Vs. Ricky, I I don't, I think it has the potential to be.
Thank you, Lance. Rex, do you see any conflicts by serving on town council? And other committees and commissions such as C V V?
Yes, I think there could be a conflict, uh, part dependent on what committee, what commission, you know, we're talking about. But, um, in general, they picture is that, yes, it's absolutely a concern, what conflict and that, you know, that needs to be addressed. Whether it's an outright, if you're on the town council and you can't be anything else. I think that might be a bit much, uh, because where do you stop, you know? If you're on the person rec, does that, does that count? You know, so, but we do need to look at each the, I think the best thing is for it to be transparent, open. When, uh, we have those issues and maybe there are one or two issues where, or positions. Where it's just too likely to be a conflict and, uh, we would need to have to draw a line at this thing.
Ross, do you see any conflicts by serving on town council and other committees and commissions such as C V V?
I think that if you're on the town council, you should definitely participate in all the subcommittees that the town has. Because if you're elected to the town council, you're, you're elected, you're, you're given the power of the election. You're the one people look at to make these decisions, make these votes. So when decisions come up from these subcommittees, you should be well aware and not simply take a subcommittee, uh, advice and and rubber standard. In terms of county versus town, I think there's definitely some, some separation there. And I think, yeah, if you were voting on a town council and you are also on a board of the county. You you're gonna run into some some kind of difference in the way, and where do you stand that? You know, so, uh, you gotta make a decision. And, you know, in those days of perfect world, I could be on the town council, I like to go for a county position. Uh, so, you know, you could overlap that way, but an individual who's on the town council, I I think probably should not, uh, serve on that position.
Thank you, Ross. Nancy, do you see any conflicts by serving on town council and other committees and commissions such as C V V?
Well, first of all, there are rules. So for instance, the planning commission, uh, town council member cannot be on the planning commission. So there are already rules in place that forgive it, you being on committees and councils and things that conflict. Um, and you think you have to be careful about that, but I also think, especially with the C V V. They're making a lot of decisions that are, uh, very much impacting the town. So in that case, not necessarily a conflict, but I think it's essential that the town council be aware and possibly on. These committees so that they can be a part of this decision making. So not necessarily conflicts, I do think that there are, um, well, I think that there are already guidelines in place that that forgive it, things like that. So think of the guidelines that are already there.
Thank you, Nancy. Bruce, do you see any conflicts by serving on town council and other committees and commissions such as C V V?
I guess there, I think there always be potential for some kind of conflict, I can't think of anything in particular, because they're all non paying. Most of these voluntary divisions and a lot of them, like C V V, that they have members from different groups like hotel owners. But a lot of them, well, I care, the town used to require if you were a town council member, you had, someone had to be on. On the planning commission and B Z A, and I think the recycling committee, things like that here. You're automatically expected to be on other things too. And there's a big plus with that, because when the town has hands on information, it wants to really take place. What I've seen and Nancy alluded to, the importance of the town and C V V working together. Nashville has always had a divide between the town and the tourist industry. And I think all the really successful tourist towns I've been in, the towns are a lot more active than like landscaping town property. And cleaning sidewalks and streets, things like that, providing and providing, that's part of the town responsibility being in a tourist town.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, we move on to the next question from the audience, and this will be the first, Rex. How can the town address the problem of declining population in the county and its effect on our school system?
Well, we've kind of touched on this a little bit earlier, um, and I think this is what we pointed out, is that it's a county issue. But the town can have a voice in this, uh, there's only so much as far as their population is concerned, that I think is able to be sheltered by the town. Uh, but we can try to work with the county to find ways to promote development, possibly in other areas that can handle it. And, uh, I think this is one of those opportunities where we can do that. We can coordinate with the county and build it, because I think there's actually so much of that declining population that Nashville itself can control.
Thank you, Rex. Ross? Um, how can the town address the problem of declining population in the county and its effect on our school system?
Uh, interesting, because I, uh, I also take a college course, I'm trying to get my, uh, my degree, and slowly get slowly get it there, by the time I retire, I'll probably have it. So right now, I'm taking a course on, on global aging, and it's it's a phenomenon, it's like every. Uh, Japan is in reverse decline, Germany, a lot of European countries are in reverse decline, where they've got populations of sixty five years of older. It's much larger than their, their total school population, or at least the population of children under five years old. America's a turnaround, um, and there's little to do, little to do about it. Uh, so it is a phenomenon, it's gonna be happening, uh, you know, short of of, uh, immigration. You know, we're not gonna have this natural rebounding of birth rates in this country. Uh, so it's not just a Nashville or around kind of Indiana, it's it's global, uh. It is a county problem in the sense that county has more land that they can dedicate to, but that housing, if you're referred to all over here. Nashville does not, Nashville sort of can partner with the county to try to, you know, make make that happen, if we can have it.
Thank you, Ross. Nancy, how can the town address the problem of declining population in the county and its effect on our school system?
Can you guess what I'm gonna say? Plan, we need a plan. This county's comprehensive plan is forty pages long. The town has two pages of that. Most counties our size have comprehensive plans that are about four hundred. The town has two pages of that. Most counties our size have comprehensive plans that are about four hundred pages long. We need to plan better. I mean, that's bottom line is, we need to plan better. Thank you Nancy. Uh Bruce, how can the town address the problem of declining population in the county and its effect on our school system?
Well, to me, it comes back to the cost of housing and a limited supply of housing, especially in town. Uh we need a forceful housing that will attract people here, which would increase the population, increase the school population, so. The town and county need to work together, we need to equip the Brown County water from Sioux and Nashville water, and vice versa. And the sewer districts and Nashville sewer district, pipe number of things, we need to work together to create. A good environment where we can build infrastructure. Back in nineteen eighty-six, Brown County, Nashville passed an economic development tax, head of tax, which almost every county has now. Nashville and Brown County have always taken that money, where every other county takes it and builds infrastructure to attract industry. We take ours and buy buildings and dump them, Nashville's paying for our police station right now, is your head of tax. We can take that money, build infrastructure for health. Thank you.
Thank you Bruce. Uh Lance, how can the town address the problem of declining population in the county and its effect on our school system?
Um you know, it's, it's, it's been mentioned many times up here, because of course this meeting, um you know, better infrastructure. Housing, and really the one thing that hasn't been mentioned is moving jobs. Um good paying jobs, aside from some sort of giant factory or something moving here, um. You know, like four bare feet, uh that has good paying, uh plentiful jobs, that's, that's a tough one. Um I, I did talk a little bit earlier about some sort of destination, um arts convention center. Type thing, I think would be a good fit here, um it would attract artisans, we can give them a place to teach. Uh we need spaces for conventions that can do catering, all of those things, but we have got to find a way. To make it sustainable for people who live there.
Thank you. Um now we move to the next question, and the first person will be calling first. What do you consider for a noise ordinance or any changes to address that issue?
Uh I, I think that the biggest problem you have in this town, it, 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 I guess it's town, not the county, is one thirty-five. Uh which were quite, quite a few towns, and as I understand it, because that's a state road, um we have variable jurisdiction over. Uh in terms of things like music, you know, uh probably the biggest uh. Contributor to live music in, in the, in the county outdoors is our artists, and I can hear that sometimes about where I live, with the, I agree. Uh but not to the point where it's uh, it, it's really disturbing. And, and I read part of that study that came out when you guys were with that, was like, you know, and you know, they talked about ambient noise. And ambient noise is birds chirping and, and everything going on, and a lot of times, part of that ambient noise is music coming from our artists. But it doesn't raise the DB uh level that your experience don't. While you can discern that noise as a guitar lead, you can't make it out, so I, I think it's hard to go with. Ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, some kind of, of a curfew or finish time would be reasonable.
Nancy, what do you consider for a noise, noise ordinance or any changes to address that issue? Uh we do have a curfew, um we have a noise ordinance that has curfew on it, um you know, it's supposed to have loud music after that. I think that uh our noise ordinance actually, if it's uh enforceable, uh or if it's enforced, it's actually pretty good. Right now, um the problem again, um is, and you know. Getting rid of police officers is not gonna help enforce the noise ordinance, so. We've got to have enough options to do, be willing to do that, and I wish that we could just get away from the noise ordinance altogether. Be nice, just be nice to your neighbor, just be considerate of your neighbor, and try not to. Think about yourself and the, maybe even the money that you're making because you're playing this loud music. Instead, think about your neighbors and be considerate and kind, I think if we would all do that, then it would be the most important. Thank you Nancy. Bruce, what do you consider for a noise ordinance or any changes to address that issue?
Well, I think the noise ordinance has been with that numerous times over the years, and one of the big catches was how you made your noise. And that is, to actually have a device that measures that from a certain area or certain investments or in certain location. Inside or outside, whatever, it becomes impossible to actually measure that sound and make something a rule that you can enforce in court. So I think for the most part, the, the music is kind of self-governing. There may need to be some enforcement, but nothing, it's hard to write a rule that applies everything. I think the biggest noise issue in, in Nashville is motorcycles. They, and some of them are actually designed to make as much noise as possible. That's, they're built that way, so we need to take control of that, if you're wanting a noise ordinance, it needs to address separate more than music. But that's my point of view.
Thank you Bruce. Lance, what do you consider for a noise ordinance or any changes to address that issue?
Um but I think the noise ordinance we have in place, if it's enforced, is, is a really good one. Um it, it allows for the, for the person to court again, um to make a, a decision. Like Bruce said, the decimal meters are a loser at court, um if you're trying to do that. Um and I, I think, you know, if you wanna call regulations, ordinances, community standards, I think we have, have something. Uh to address that, otherwise, as we used to say, the platform, uh everybody six to the lowest common denominator. That person that could care less about how much they're making or track or product on the street. Is the one that's setting the standard, so there's have to be some sort of community standard there. Um or expectation that we all come by to.
Thank you Lance. What do you consider for a noise ordinance or any changes to address that issue?
Um there's nothing about the current noise ordinance that I, you know, in disagreement with. But at the same time, I would be open to suggestions to try to improve it, uh repeat, it needs to be enforced. And I do think that uh the motorcycle ordinance in particular, at times, like. It's, it doesn't seem like it's as bad as it has been, but uh I don't know if that's a generational thing, or if I just got lucky as far as when I've been in town. But uh that's, I would definitely be still open to any changes that are brought forth about changing the noise ordinance. But I think what we have now is pretty close to what we need, uh as long as it makes work.
Thank you Rex. I, I can't help interjecting at this point, I know, I've been a, I've been a prosecuting attorney, and. And these are the most difficult laws to enforce, uh so. I give you kudos that you even have ordinance. All right, the next question, I will tell you, you're, I'm going to end questioning at eight o'clock, because you will have been going for an hour and a half. And at that time, we will start our final uh statements, um because I'm sure you're getting tired, and I'm just gonna apologize ahead of time. If there's anybody's questions like this. Okay, um would you support, I'm sorry, forgot to say who this goes to, Nancy. Would you support investing in hiring a permanent town engineer? To help infrastructure concerns? We don't have a permanent engineer, but we have an engineering firm that the utility board has hired. We have an amazing engineer that has helped us so much with our sewer uh problems. Uh our sewer was very close to be taken over by the state, if you didn't know that, was in bad shape. Uh we come in here with uh MS consultants and their engineers, and we've been able to get it up and running to. Better state, we're still working on it every single day, so engineers are very important, it's very important. If you don't know how to do something, hire the right person that does. Thank you Nancy. Bruce, would you support investigating, hiring a permanent town engineer to help? Infrastructure concerns?
No, for one thing, there's no money in the budget to hire an engineer, so that kind of woman, I said right there. Aside from that, in the past, when I was on the town council before, Roger Kelso was the town manager. And he has an engineering degree, and he, he knew everything there was, no, at least I thought he did, about sewer and water lines. And he was replaced, and he left by Roger Bush, who probably, if anybody remembers, Roger was also an engineer. And he moved on to higher places too, and it's been very successful. To me, part of being a town manager, you're advertising that job for town manager. Where the job we're from should be a knowledge of engineering in water and sewer, that should be a job we're part of.
Thank you Bruce. Lance, would you support investigating, hiring a permanent town engineer to help infrastructure concerns?
Um I, I don't think it's a bad idea to investigate every time, I really think that, um it kind of depends on how. Um infrastructure progresses in town, or will we go, if not, bringing the right people is, is paramount, and um. You know, it sounds like maybe we need to send Sandy to engineering school. In many good stuff. Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't think with, with regarded issues like that, anything can truly be off the table, and I think investigating. Things like that are not a bad idea, I don't know that I would be necessary for.
Thank you Lance. Rex, would you support investigating, hiring a permanent town engineer to help infrastructure concerns?
I think we need to have the right person for the job, and I don't find that one engineer would always have the best uh skill set. For our infra- infrastructure needs, so I think it's probably better to have that firm on retainer and uh work through them. So that way, if it's a water issue, we can have a water specifically expert, and if it's a infrastructure issue with roads or something. And bridges, then we can have that kind of expert at that at the right time.
Okay, Ross, would you support investigating, hiring a permanent town engineer to help infrastructure concerns?
Uh I, I, you know, just got a lot of questions, I would probably support. Um a consultant if they weren't financially uh rewarded by the decisions that were being made. Um I'm, I'm in industry, and most manufacturers, when they have an issue, they go to a department, they work whatever, everything's bad. They call in all the different suppliers, they, they get different proposals, different process proposals. Uh cost studies, analysis, uh et cetera, from these different companies, and then, then the, the manufacturing. Let's make their, their decisions. We are like that manufacturer, we need to review these, these things, but I think we, we need. Competing ideas to come uh to us versus just one, uh you know, one. I just want to do one conduit to the town.
Thank you Ross. Um we are almost precisely at eight o'clock at the time, and so now we are going to switch into the closing remarks. Mode, and the first one will be Bruce.
Okay.
You have one minute.
Okay, I'll hit my button here. I say thanks to the lead women voters for hosting this forum, it's been really good. I spent the last forty years devoting my life to serving Brown County in one way or another. In my experiences that I've served in, I've developed relationships with attorneys, engineers, architects, developers. Uh any range of people in different general classifications, and worked on a lot of different projects. I've worked with IDM and FEMA on water projects and sewer projects when, when I was on the town council the first time around. So I know how the system works. Uh gained valuable knowledge with a lot of state, federal and local agencies, worked with county, I know all the county commissioners and the sheriff. Uh I've participated in a lot of county affairs and know a lot of historical data and. Uh I consider myself well positioned to contribute to improving Nashville. And my saying is always, Nashville should be in a constant state of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you Bruce. Lance?
Um I, I also would like to thank the lead um for having us tonight, and I tell you, I've learned a lot up here. And I had a really great experience, I was a little nervous about it, but um. You know, I have actually learned a lot uh being up here, and that's one of the things that um. Being a teacher makes you a lifelong learner, if I am elected, I have a lot to learn, a lot. But, you know, I, I hope people know that I would work to that end, um I, I feel like. Working in the classroom has prepared me well, for dealing with not only the general public. Um but for your colleagues and the youth that are gonna take this over soon there.
Thank you Lance. Uh Rex?
I would also like to thank lead women voters, and thank everyone that came out today. Uh I'm here simply because I love this town, and I'm not going anywhere, and I assume that that's probably the same for all of you in this room. I, I will also admit that one thing I would fully admit too is that I know that I need to learn a lot, and I'm. Ready and eager to jump in and start learning more about the machinations of how this town actually works. Thank you.
Thank you Rex. Ross?
Thank you, Sunny, and thank you for the lead women voters, and thank you Sandy for everything you do here for us, we're gonna send you to engineers school right away. Yeah, and thank you all for being here, one thing I love about this town since moving here, uh you know, every, every small town, every, you know, municipality has their differences. But this town seems to come together and be very genuinely interested in, in, in what's happening here. Um I, there's a lot of people who have moved to this town from other places. Uh you know, coming from a small town, don't wanna say, hey, don't come here and tell us what, how, how to live our life, we, we're doing just fine. And most people who come to Brown County and Nashville came here because there was something here attracted them in the first place. So uh if I was elected to the town council, I would not be trying to change it or necessarily like percent of the better. Uh but I do think that there is infrastructure and some other issues that need to be uh addressed. And I would also uh try to open up, uh keep the cooperation with the county to really, uh you know, I think it probably usually helps to, you know. Find areas to work better uh together.
Thank you Ross. Nancy? Thank you um uh from everybody else, uh being a teacher, I, I'm, I'm at a, like. I don't know, because there's so many things that have been set up here that are not quite accurate, I don't know whether I want to teach you, or I just wanna say. I care so much about this town that I want to teach you what, what this town is doing and what is going on in this town. Please feel free to call me anytime and talk to me, um my, my, mine's, I probably won't answer it right, maybe because, you know, you have so many crazy. But feel free to call me, uh you know, I'm at a constant. Being a student, a student is somebody that is always learning, so I agree with these guys that there's so much more to even learn. Um but there's also a matter of, you know, I attend every council meeting. Even when I was not re-elected, I attended every council meeting to make sure that I knew what was going on. And I think it's really important for us to all be aware of that, I hope that um you can, you can trust me to uh do what's right for you and for this community. Thank you Nancy. Um at this time, I do would appreciate if you would join me in thanking the candidates. For. And I will tell you that I've had the opportunity, working with the lead, to try to set up a number of these forums, and it is so um. Wonderful that you were willing to come, spend your time actually talking to your constituents and presenting yourself to them. Um I encourage everyone in the audience and your friends and neighbors, please talk it up, we don't want a twenty percent turnout. Get your people to turn out. You don't want a twenty percent turnout, get your people to turn out and, and vote this election. And I'm sure it's important to all of these candidates. Uh, verify your voter registration no later than October tenth. Attend the public test of the election equipment that is being conducted right here, October third at ten AM. Vote on November seventh between six AM and six PM. Or take advantage of early voting dates on the town calendar website. Um, and those dates include between the eleventh of October and fourth of November. But the dates are not consistent, you can't really memorize them, so you need to check it out. Um, and you can also apply for a mail-in absentee ballot if you do so by October twenty-sixth. And some of the rules for filing that application have changed, so you need to make sure if you don't know them, get in touch with the Templar. Okay? So, um, thank you all so much for your time.